Good morning, Michael.
Morning Jenny White.
How are you today?
Good, I'm excited. You know, for the first time in a long time, I just, I feel like we have the United States of America actually going in the right direction. I mean, I was getting real worried for a long time about my kids and the future and just how crazy everything was getting. I'm glad we're seem to be, the pendulum seems to be going back the other direction.
Well, I, you know, it's so sad because I'm so cynical. I've just gotten so, so cynical, you know, and I'm just like, um, boy, I really, really want to believe it. And but I really, really want to, oh, hey, Marvin's on. Good morning, Marvin. How are you? Marvin, stop writing. I can't read everything you're writing. Quit it. Just take a break for a minute. Let me catch up. Um, Marvin's been doing great on his stuff. He just is putting things out right and left. And I'm like, but I can't read them. And everything else. Um, but yeah, so I don't know. I agree with you. There's a part of me that really. But who was it that got on to, oh, it was Julian. Remember Julian got on to us about hope? Remember? She was like, stop it. You, our only hope is in Jesus. Stop it.
She was, that's right.
I know, and I get it, but it's just, it is kind of, you do kind of, you know. You know what I've noticed? It's really interesting. And tell me if you've noticed this. I did, uh, one time when I was mayor, we did, had like a leadership seminar that we did, and we had some people come in. I think it was like from the council of state governments or something and talk about leadership. And they showed this video. It was the most interesting thing. It was a video. It was a, a social experiment that they did and they got it on video. And it was a, they went to a, an outdoor concert. And this one guy gets up and just starts dancing, you know, and he's getting after it and he's dancing and like people are going.
What's happening?
I don't know with you. What are you doing? And he doesn't stop and he keeps doing, he just doesn't stop and he keeps doing it. And probably about, I mean, it was a long time. It was like 20 minutes. Somebody actually got up and started dancing with him. And so the two of them were starting to dance and they were dancing. Then in a few more minutes, another couple of people joined. And then after like 10 minutes of him being up there dancing with this other person, they had a huge crowd of people up there dancing.
Yeah.
And the whole point of the social experiment was to show that people are influenced by their surroundings and by what other people do. And it was, it's so interesting to me because I think you can see that right now. So when Biden was president and certainly when Obama was president, remember so many people quit putting flags on their cars and they take their bumper stickers off because, you know, people who were, you know, more liberal supporters were felt perfectly fine about telling them to, you know,
Yeah.
go to hell or whatever, because they had a bumper sticker on their. And yeah, people were actually getting assaulted for having like flag photos on or stickers on the back of their cars. And so people quit doing that. And so as people quit doing that and, and the fear kind of rose that there was going to be pushback. You know, the conservatives kind of went into their hard crusty outer shells.
Yeah.
And kind of went away. And you look at what's happening now, so many people, because leadership is out in front doing these things, they feel empowered. Now you see people with flags on their cars. Now you see people with Trump, you know, paraphernalia walking around. Now you see it's a whole different vibe. And it doesn't have to do with the fact that people have changed. I still believe it's a close margin, but I still believe the majority of this nation are conservative people at the heart. And by that, I mean, they just want government to leave them alone. They don't. Yeah. Yeah. And I think that's why, the number one reason why Trump was elected. People were just sick of the overreach, the socialism, the Marxism, if you want to call it. You're going to read this book about a trans, you know, person and you're going to like it and shut up about it.
Well, it's from that, it's from that leadership perspective, you know, just like that story you just told about the social experiment, you have, you know, someone's got to be the leader in that whole situation.
Right.
You know, you get the right person up there, the right things happen around that person.
Right. But I think the, the part that I want to mention about that whole thing is this. We, we have, we have to throw off that human part of us, that human mantle that makes us feel like we need an earthly leader, you know, we, we can't just act like we want to act and not worry about what's going to happen. You know, well, we'll be shunned by our friends and family, or I won't have, I mean, good grief, so many of us got, you know, lost friends over the whole Trump deal. I can't tell you the number of people that I knew when I was mayor that won't talk to me now and called me an insurrectionist. You know, because I went to the Capitol on J six. So, and we were friends before that. So.
Now you just, you just went up there. You didn't go inside, correct? You just were there.
But it doesn't matter.
You're still an insurrectionist, Jenny.
Correct. I mean, it doesn't even matter. I mean, we, we went to the Capitol. We were literally going down Pennsylvania Avenue to the Capitol after pretty much everything had happened inside. You know, we were just witnessing, you know, the government throwing, uh, no, not throwing, shooting tear gas at citizens of the United States. But still in all, what I'm trying to say is, and the bottom line is this, we have to be, and Julia says, good people don't need man's law, bad people don't obey. You know, that's a hundred percent fact.
Very much.
Actual factual, but we've got to quit worrying about that kind of stuff and stand up for our beliefs. And not wait for somebody, not wait for a Trump, you know, not wait for somebody to show up and go, I'm here. I'll get you out of this.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, uh, we'd like to, yes, it should work like that, but you know, in all reality, we, we need those. I mean, the, the society in general, you know, depends on that leader to give them, you know, fulfill that, that part, but.
Well, speaking of leaders, we have one today.
Well, yeah, and I'm, I'm excited to have Colonel Jim Putnam on here with us. And in full disclosure, we did invite the current school board, uh, member who's running in this election also, Marcus Jones. We've invited him multiple times on the show that he's always declined, but also just for this interview, you know, we've asked him, I don't know, maybe twice, just, you know, that we're, we're want to interview the, the school board candidates and he declined. So just to get that out there.
Tell us, remember, he did tell us that he would meet with us on the school grounds in a school conference room.
Yeah.
He did that. He just came on the show.
Yeah.
So let's, let's bring on Colonel Putnam this morning. I'm excited to talk to Colonel Putnam and find out. Good morning, Colonel.
Good morning, Jenny. How are you today?
How are you?
I'm doing well. Uh, if I was gonna emulate my opponent, perhaps we should meet on base in a bunker. Well, I'm just joking.
That's actually a good one. Oh, and then Diane says that sounds suspect about Marcus. So you, when I met you just a minute ago, when I met you just a minute ago, I said, you have a voice for radio.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So tell us about that, because I love the story you told me. You have to tell everybody. It's such a great story.
Okay, well, uh, I went to the Air Force Academy and I was on the, uh, Connect Radio Station. We started a station from scratch. And so I was a disc jockey on KFAA eighty nine point seven. It's another super duper sky trooper weekend. So because of that, during my career, I got tapped all the time for changes of command ceremonies or narrations or dedications, award ceremonies and so on. Well, I was a Colonel out of Tinker. Um, and I got tapped to be the narrator for the dedication of the spirit of Oklahoma, a B two stealth bomber. So they brought one in and they covered up the name and all that. We had a force star general and we had the president of the North of Grumman there and it was a great big deal. A lot of dignitaries. And we have the speeches and everything's fine at the tail end. It's time for a flyby by a B two stealth bomber, which is kind of impressive. It's, looks like something Batman would throw off his bat belt, you know, it's a, and so, uh, I have a lieutenant colonel standing by my, standing below the platform. When he tugs on my left trouser leg, that means we're about 90 seconds away from having the airplane fly. So I get the tug to, um, make a couple of comments. I go, ladies and gentlemen, if you look to the north, you'll see the B two spirit of Georgia do a flyby and then, uh, return to its base. And you could hear it, but you couldn't see it. It was a very low cloud ceiling day, about eight hundred foot ceiling, one of those gray overcast days. And suddenly it appears out of the mist and it flies down, it goes down the runway. And it adds up power and it zooms back up into clouds and disappears. Everybody goes, yay, it's a big deal. And, uh, I thought, well, that worked really well. And, uh, the ceremony is over and I'm walking away and this lady comes up to me and says, how do you make it disappear like that? Well, I'm sorry, ma'am. It's a military secret.
It's just a military.
It's a military secret. We just can't tell you. So.
Everybody's commenting on your voice too.
Oh, well.
Yeah, everybody loves it. So I'm really, I'm really curious. So you, I mean, it sounds like you had a great military career. Tell us a little bit about yourself, first of all.
Um, okay, I grew up in Oregon.
We'll forgive you for that.
Well, when I grew up, it was, it was a nice conservative state. It was, uh, kind of like we are here. And now it's turned into Moscow and the Columbia, you know, Portland where I grew up. I couldn't get into, uh, Air Force Academy right away. I was qualified, but nothing sterling. So I ended up going to a prep school. And the prep school jacked my college board score sky high with ninety nine plus centile in English, ninety six centile in math. Boom, and like a porch climber. So.
Wow.
So that worked pretty well. I graduated with the grade civil engineering and then, um, it was in pilot training up in Vance, flying the T thirty seven. I got medically grounded. And I asked for how long? He said, life.
Oh, no.
Well, I had an allergic reaction to chocolate. They diagnosed twenty six years later. And I caused syncytating spectrum appear in my vision. So it took another year and a half before I could get a private pilot level three certificate. And I, so I learned I got migraines from my mom's side. Thanks, mom. Uh, and so I was able to, uh, pretty much control them. And now they're, they're kind of a, a background issue. It's not much of a deal anymore. So I ended up being maintenance officer. I, uh, started out in munitions for seven years, including nuclear weapons. If you want to have a sense of responsibility, be a second lieutenant convoying nuclear weapons to the flight line. And they give you an M sixteen and a side, another sidearm. And say, these are your weapons. You will convoy them and turn them over to appropriate authorities. You won't have them taken from you. And if they are taken from you, you will get them back. And the safety of hostages is of no concern. Those are shoot to kill orders as a second lieutenant. So you learn responsibility in the Air Force really early on. So, uh, I thought that was an eye opener. Maybe we ought to take this really seriously. We're in a fighter interceptor unit that was responsible for defending East Coast of the United States.
Yeah.
And we were there to keep us safe. And they did a really good job of doing that. And I was really proud to be part of that. Moving on to aircraft maintenance. Uh, normally a squadron commander in a career once, I did it four times.
Oh, wow.
Uh, I did it as a captain because our lieutenant colonel got, he was going to drive his Volkswagen from Tel Aviv through Lebanon, through Syria, on up through Turkey and Bulgaria. And this is during the Cold War. These are all communist countries. I'm going, and you're an Air Force lieutenant colonel? You're going to do that? He made it all the way to Beirut before the, before the heads ball out gave him a two year stay, uh, courtesy of them. So.
Wow.
I got thrown in the deep end of that one and was a commander for, uh, about eight months. Fast forward, um, I'm now a major. I'm stationed down in Florida, Tindall Air Force Base. We're taking care of F fifteens. Eagle fighters are really marvelous. And, uh, uh, I've been on the job about six months. They finally decided to send me to the, uh, the tactical air command commander's course. So I go there and there's about forty people in the room about how to be a squadron commander. Well, I've been almost over a year now and, uh, I'm in a room with about thirty five fighter pilots, one or two security police officers, three or four other maintenance officers, personnel, civil engineers, cats and dogs and so on. So the instructor goes, how many people have ever had to yell at somebody? All hands go up. Okay. How many people have ever given a written letter of counseling? Hmm, three quarters of the hands go up. How many people have issued a letter of reprimand and entered in a personnel file? Ten hands go up. How many people have, uh, remanded people for, uh, Article fifteen and a little court martial where commander is the judge? Six hands go up. How many people sent people to court martial? I haven't court martial. Two hands go up. How many people have done, well homicide? My hand goes up and he goes, what are you doing here? And I go, well, I want to find out if I did it right. So, so yeah, I got a little experience and I took that squadron to be the best in tactical air command, won the major grant award, ended up being second best in the Air Force. They moved me over to a bigger squadron. Uh, we were shooting five hundred missiles a year out in the Gulf of Mexico at, uh, fighter pilots have learned how do you shoot their missile? So.
Oh, wow.
We're loading and firing over five hundred a year at, uh, at target drones and target aircraft and, uh, took that squadron to be, to win the same award, best intact, second best in the Air Force. I go to England, uh, command a huge squadron, deploys the people eighty two times a year to eighteen different destinations. We take care of, uh, uh, two A ten and one F sixteen, um, top gun kind of aggressor squadrons. Take it from the, the eighteen times squadrons of that type in Europe. I was number eighteen and, and falling fast. I took it to be number two in Europe, number one in England. My boss said, you need to dial it back. You're pushing too hard. And I go.
You're making everybody look bad.
Yeah, yeah. So we had a change of command and it turned out the person who was saying I was pushing too hard was the number two. She took command and took it back down to eighteen. So.
Wow.
Good job, boss. So, um, finally, uh, went to the major depot as I learned, uh, I got a master's degree in Germany, uh, in aviation management, which is half advanced technology and half in Harvard MBA. And the, uh, second one was from the National Defense University, uh, which was actually it's an acquisition university. It's how to buy weapon systems, how to buy tanks and ships and airplanes and so on.
So you can help me get a tank?
Yeah, yeah, I can write you a contract. How many do you want?
Need tank for the farm, Jenny.
I know. Can you imagine people are out there going, stop, don't talk to her about that.
Well, the, the problem with tanks is they get really bad mileage.
Oh, yeah.
And they tend to chew up the ground really bad, you know, so.
My husband actually drove, uh, track vehicles in the army in Alaska for a while. So yes, I've got a little bit of background and just hearing about that.
I got to drive a tank one time and nearly stuck a gun barrel on the side of a berm. And so the, uh, sergeant who commanded thinks that we'll take over from here.
You're relieved of duty.
Yeah, yeah. Um, what that does is that you get a level of certification, a level one, two or three. And level three is a major acquisition program where you can buy anything. And so I get a level three in program management and a level two in acquisition logistics. Just fancy words saying at the highest level of DOD, I can buy stuff. So I get sent to Tinker. I'm running, um, uh, the propulsion management division, which we're responsible for half the jet engines in the Air Force, including Navy and Marine and some army engines. And I'll spend the six hundred and sixty million dollars a year, and this is over twenty years ago, and it wasn't enough. Um, you know, AWACS engines, B fifty two engines, B one supersonic bomber engines, uh, fighter engines. It was, it was an interesting job. So, uh, I got told I was going to be inspector general and I go, and they said, well, I mentioned that, uh, we shouldn't, uh, we shouldn't deliver a poor quality product. We should deliver it on time. We should deliver it at the cost we, we said we would. Oh, you've got a conscience. You're the IG. So I was responsible for fraud, waste and abuse for the twenty two thousand people on, what, Tinker and the five, five wings.
You were the first dog.
Yeah, you're the first dog.
Well, I'm familiar with it at the working level. Yeah, yeah. If we, uh, we found evidence of criminal behavior, I handed it over to the OSI, which is the FBI of the Air Force or the security forces for, uh, criminal behavior. And, um, I, I like part of the job because the tech sergeant came in one day and said, uh, I'm, I'm starving. My family has got damn near nothing to eat. I'm not getting paid right. And he told me he hadn't been paid, but about forty percent of his, his salary for the last six months. Hmm. And everything he told me rang true. So I called the defense accounting, uh, accounting finance office and the commander was a major was in my office in ten minutes and five minutes later, he said, go over to, to the DFAS office and pick up your check for all of that back money and your, your pay squared away. That felt pretty good. I like that. The other thing I did was dealt with all the congressional offices for the local congressman and the senators. And they had a lot of staffers who were energetic and bright eyed, wishy-tale, do nothing about the military.
Yeah.
So I'd have to, come on out. We'll take you around, show you around. So that was a big education and, and they really appreciated it. And it made a lot of, uh, a lot of friends for the Air Force. So, uh, it was, it was, it was anytime.
So are you retired now?
Pardon?
So are you retired now?
I'm retired. Yeah, I re, I retired on two, uh, two thousand. The last assignment to get me thirty years is going to put me in a nine hundred square foot center block house in the middle of Mojave Desert to fix another inspector general shop that was the worst in the command. I go, I'm, and then I get to pay California income tax and go, I really hard pressed to find any positive side to this. So. So I retired with twenty eight years here. Then I went to work for North of Grumman on the B two stealth bomber program, F eighteen super hornet program. It was like the Air Force to change jobs every two years, hop around. Uh, everything from a test squadron at Point Madue for the Navy to, uh, KC ten tankers and Abu Dhabi, United Emirates. So. But I took an early retire from that so I could take care of my wife. She had breast cancer. And I'm glad I did. We, we had another five years before she passed. So.
I'm so sorry.
Yeah. No, that's life. Um, in church, I met a new lady, another lady I'd seen for twenty plus years. And she, uh, she walked up and said, oh, I see you have a little logo on your shirt. And it was my Air Force logo. It says, my daddy was in the Air Force. I said, well, I'm a private pilot. I still have an airplane. She says, well, I'm a private pilot too. So we went flying and she was one of the few women that flew in the airplane that were quite knuckle. And she was flying the airplane, having a good time. So we've been flying ever since. So Dr. Billy Putnam and I have been married, uh, coming up on six years now.
Oh, well, that's a great story. I love that story.
Well, there, there seems to be no lack of experience and leadership and, and all of that. So, so why, what, what was the push into school board? Why, why do you want to run for?
Well, I, uh, got approached, you know, my, my wife has been the president and vice president and secretary. And now she's the treasurer for the Edmund Republican women. And so I, I got dragged into that because she goes to my meetings and I go to her meetings. Except I can't pass the physical to be a regular member. So I'm associate member. Anyway, uh, a bunch of them came up to me and said, you know, the school board's coming up. Uh, we'd like you to take a look at this. And I go, well, my kids have gone through the, you know, the high school here and we're all out the back end and, um, I said, we'll take a look at this. So when I looked at it, I found that measured against itself, the Edmund School, uh, school district performance over the last ten years declined thirty nine and a half percent. Well, I moved to Edmund because the schools are blue ribbon and really good. And that, um, in twenty eleven, Edmund School District was rated statewide at ninety point four percent above everybody else. And now it's barely at seventy percent and continuing to fall. Um, then I learned that at the, on an average of all three high schools in Edmund, uh, about seventy percent of the high school students are proficient in English and only forty percent are proficient in math. I'm going, that's appalling. That might be why the young folks behind the counter can't really make change for me accurately without a computer to help them. So.
Or a TikTok video.
Uh, yeah, well, I haven't ticked my talk lately, so. I, I, I was on Facebook for a while and, you know, I, I put all my airplane pictures up there and, and then I looked at it and go, oh, it talked about me, 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 me. And, uh, ten thousand people who were a friend of a distant friend who had a relative who was in Bulgaria. And I go, this is a huge waste of time. So I took it down to one picture and then the crowning glory was my, my wife's stepson's wife's cousin down in Louisiana, sent me a link for Boy Scouts and four age shooting sports. Cause I'd been a Boy Scout leader for eighteen years. You know, I taught kids how to shoot on the range safely and so on. And I clicked on the link and bing, banned for life. Oh, no, and no appeal. I'm going, uh, their algorithm saw kids and shooting and whatnot. So.
Yeah.
You know, okay.
So I got to ask you, because Julia has, Julia has a question. She says, do we need more money in government rules or less money in government rules to be successful in education?
Oklahoma has found in the last five years that they put an awful lot of money in its education and the results keep getting bad, worse. Uh, we don't need more money. Edmund schools are adequately funded. I, I took a look at my property tax this year. I'm spending three thousand one hundred dollars for Edmund schools. And I'm thinking, what am I getting for my money? Maybe it's time to look into this. We don't need more rules. What we need are, basically, I, I believe is, is leadership. And I'm not seeing it. I'm not seeing it at the, at the school level. I'm certainly not seeing it at the superintendent level. I'm not seeing it at the board level either. Um, leadership is just getting people to do what the mission is or what the goals are or to achieve what the focus is. And if you don't even have a focus.
Yeah.
Then whatever you're doing is okay, I guess. Uh, here's an example. I went to the last school board. And they had a survey of ten areas, um, kind of a climate survey for the teachers. Six of the areas were about the same or okay. Two had improved a little bit and two had gone down. She said the two that went down were, uh, work, life balance, home and school. The other one that went down was classroom environment. Hmm. That sounds like a discipline problem. So then she said, well, uh, we've identified the problem. And if we don't do something about the problem, they'll know that we have no credibility. And so we're going to give another survey next month. What? If you've got a classroom, uh, atmosphere or discipline problem, you get that principal in that school to that classroom, work with the teacher, get the vice principal down there, get the parents involved, and you fix the classroom problem. You don't give another survey a month from now to see if it magically got better.
No.
That's a lack of leadership. Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
So you mean, you actually have to do something to get stuff done and not talk about?
Oh, I know. It's like your lawn doesn't mow itself. Come on.
That's very weird. Well, you know, we do have, I expect those to come out now that we have, you know, things to, uh, sweep your floor by themselves. Um, so I want to ask you a question, another question, and then I'm going to mention this one quickly because this is true. So Greenlaw made a deal with the local government to share property taxes to help with the Tiff district. People have no idea that their property tax money is not going to the schools directly. So that might be something to look into because that's why Michael, one of the reasons, one of the, what, twenty seven reasons, Michael, we hate Tiff districts. Because it just removes the money. I mean, you, the money then doesn't go to the school. They siphon and offer whatever project the Tiff is for. Um, so my other question for you is, do you, so what do school boards do? It's a one word answer begins with E.
One word answer? Nothing, apparently.
Yeah, in today's reality.
Responsible for setting district policy. And then supporting the leadership within the district to accomplish education to kids and do it very effectively. So they, they set the policy. They hire and fire the superintendent. They follow up on the superintendent and whatever problem area superintendent identifies. And if they think that there's something not quite right, they go out and look at it. Uh, what has been happening as near as I can tell, watching the, the videos of other meetings and attending meetings is that the superintendent sets the agenda, superintendent in front of them and all five vote yes. is that the superintendent, uh, sets the agenda, superintendent in front of them and all five vote yes. So it's always five to zero, what's on the agenda for the superintendent and they do what she wants. I'm going, I'm not seeing a lot of leadership here and I'm not seeing a lot of supervision. And I'm not seeing a lot of really answering tough, asking tough questions about what's going on. Uh, if you're doing the same thing over and over expecting a different result, that's a definition of insanity. Well, we're, we're on that track. So that's why I'm running for school board. I'd like to, uh, stick my hand in there and go, wait a minute, uh, let, let's help these teachers with the classroom environment. What's going on there? And if the answer is, I don't know, my answer would be find out. And if you want me to hold your hand and go down there and find out, let's go together. I don't care.
Yeah.
So.
Well, and with your, with your career, basically from the military aspect of discipline across the board. I mean, I, I would think that just gives you that much more expertise.
It's just about finding out what's going on. You, you know, the air force got way deep in email leadership and there is no such thing. A friend of mine ended up being a two star journalist. He said, virtual presence is actual absence. Get your butt out there and go see what's going on.
Yeah.
Virtual presence is actual absence. I want that on a T-shirt, Michael. Get that done.
There we go. Quote, quote.
And here's the reason why I, I bring that up. And by the way, you were a hundred percent correct in your, um, your answer about school boards, but I can make the answer easier for you next time. You just say everything. Because the school board legitimately is the government of the school. It does everything.
I, I had a lady complain about the lunches for her eighth grader. So I'm already, already got a list going. So we'll see if I get elected.
So Julie has another question for you. Should librarians, principals and teachers who provide pornography to children go to jail?
I'm hard pressed to understand why there's any pornography in any school at all. Can anybody who provides it should be either disciplined to removed or fired? Uh, and then if that violates a state statute, let the local, uh, law enforcement investigate that. And if they find it's a violation of the law, do your duty.
So we've already had two people who have said you need to run for state commissioner. Apparently you're supposed to not even start locally. You're just supposed to run for state superintendent.
Well, that'd be an outsider. That's for sure. Yeah. There's been a lot of drama there, hasn't there?
Yeah. Oh, yes. Marvin says, does the district superintendent work for the school board or is it the other way around? And you already answered that part.
Works for the board.
Might as well just say it again.
Yeah. Superintendent works for the board. Uh, this, the superintendent's going to retire in June and they've got a search committee. Um, I'm not, I don't know how to describe it. It's, it's a mix of, uh, teachers' union and superintendents who do a, a talent search, if you will, out for another superintendent and present it to the board and the board, uh, will probably act on whatever the current superintendent recommends, what those other groups recommend and hire someone else. Uh, if elected, I'd probably be too late to affect that decision because the election is the first of April. They're going to hire in April. So.
Well, but still and all though, and I'm going to just call you Colonel because I like it better. Um.
I'm used to that name.
Yeah. Still and all, it's still and all, even if you don't, if, if you, because I'm just going to expect that Edmund understands that we need new leadership and you'll be elected. So when you get elected, you'll at least know that you, you tell the superintendent what to do, not the other way around. So, I mean, you're going in there already with an attitude and an idea and the knowledge that probably, well, that at least from what I've seen from the other board members doesn't seem like they have. So, I mean, that's a good thing.
Well, one of the problems that we have, I'm, I'm also a commissioner on the Oklahoma Division of Aerospace and Aeronautics. Been doing that for seven years. We take care of the hundred day public use airports. One of the issues for them is, uh, we have seven commissioners. So we have four more meet in a room. It's suddenly a meeting and violation of the open meeting act. Okay. So three of us can get together for coffee, but you go stand in the corner. With the board here, if three or more get together, it's a violation of the open meeting act. So they're really sensitive about that. And, uh, you can talk one-on-one with any one of them, but you can't really talk with two or.
Well, you know.
And I think that makes them gun shy about getting on issues and dealing with things. And they think that the only time they can do it is once a month in front of the public. And I'm going, if you just publicize it, me and the folks want to come, come. And if you need to come three times a week to solve something, great. My thought would be if, if I get elected and we get a new suit, the thing I would do is go to her or him and say, uh, let's pick the worst school we have in the district and let's go look at it and let's go see, and let's go see what their leadership's like. If the principal's not doing very well, we'll get a new principal. If they have some teachers who are really weak, we will mentor their, mentor them, train them and do all we can to improve them. And if they don't improve, we get new teachers. It's just, it's just a training, education, seeing what's going on, catching people doing the right things and praising them in public, chastising them in private and building on it over and over again. And, and people will meet your expectations if you set them, you set them high, but not be unobtainable. And then they blossom. They do really well. But I'm not seeing any of that right now.
Well, and I, I've been in positions enough to know that I agree with you a hundred percent. So one of the things that I wanted to mention too is Alina Ashley, who's a state school board member, or I'm sorry, not a state school board member, a member of the Tulsa Public Schools, uh, Board of Education. She actually started doing what you suggested. She started holding community meetings. And then that way, school board members could come if they wanted to, and then the public could come, and then you could get things done. And it was in public and they didn't have to worry about, you know, the open meetings issue. So I think I've never seen Edmund do that kind of thing, um, have.
That would require that more letter word called work.
There, there is some of that. Okay. There was a question. Julie has another class question for you. Um, oh, she, she has another comment that's comment. If they have more people in administration than in the classroom, reverse that.
That's one of the things. There's been an eighty eight percent increase in administrators in the last 10 years. Eight percent increase in teachers. That's upside down.
One hundred percent. And Margaret says, common sense about what we were talking about, meeting. She said, this is a important concept to the current board. And that's absolutely a hundred percent. Um, so Julie had another question I thought was good. Oh, okay. So she says, our injustice system is afraid to prosecute anyone in the schools for some reason. How do we solve the problem? And I'm going to give you a little background on that. So we, obviously Edmund had the issue with the dirty books in schools and Superintendent Grunwald addressed that by basically suing the state when the state said, get all those books out of the, the school. So Grunwald basically responded to that by suing the state to keep the books in the school, even though there were a lot of parents who were very upset about, um, just the fact that these books were developmentally improper for kids.
Right.
So at, at what point do you, and, and it seems like the justice system keeps backing this up. And we have the same problem with trying to get, um, teachers or coaches or human public school employees who are pedophiles, basically out of the schools. We seem to have problems with that. Do you have any solutions for actually making public schools safer for kids?
Well, how much of a background check we doing on somebody we hire? If somebody's bounced around from five, six different school districts over the last 10 years, something's going on. And we need to find out. And if we don't get any good answers, then we don't take a risk in hiring. Uh, went to a meeting here a month or so ago about a lady who had been a twenty five year teacher and she started a, gosh, I'm embarrassed to say I can't remember the, the group she started, but it is to identify and, and remove statewide pedophiles. It's a little part she'd identified like seventy of them. And a lot of them have been coaches in smaller school districts where they pretty much have a free hand to do anything.
Yeah.
And what she found and, and explained to us was absolutely appalling. I hate to sound like a cliche, but I beg your pardon, Jenny.
I think it was probably the meeting with broken trust.
That's it. Yeah. Yeah. Um, are we doing background checks? Then are we following up? Are we listening to what the parents have to say? And if the parents are making a complaint, we get two or more witnesses, we put them in front of the police department and say, investigate. Now you also have to do, build a relationship with the local police department. Can you trust the police chief, the chief detective? If not, can you go to the OSBI and have them investigate it? You have to have some connection. You just can't make a cold call when the time comes. You have to build that ahead of time. There's a, there's a wide spectrum of, of, for, in the military, we call it discipline, late to work to homicide and everything in between. You're ineffective if you don't know how to deal with every aspect on that continuum. Well, if we're just happy, happy, glad, yes, yes, yes. And a little tiny end of that spectrum that's non-confrontational, you're ineffective on the rest of it. So let's learn what the rest of it is. What are we allowed to do? What are the state laws? I'm told by one, uh, one member, uh, that, um, you can paddle a kid in school by state law. Oh, when's the last time we did that in Edmund? Crickets. Got real quiet. I remember getting the backend of Mr. Lund's clipboard in my hind end in the ninth grade and that, that pretty well cured me for the rest of my school career. I don't advocate that as a routine, uh, correction, but if you've got one person that's always acting out, the trip to the vice principal should be a really strong deterrent and not just a down and back, down and back. I'm old fashioned.
So. Well, I've mentioned often that my, uh, posterior met, uh, the wood a couple of times, particularly in middle school. So.
Well, I call it a significant emotional event, you know, so.
Our, our principal in middle school literally had like four or five paddles on the wall, out in the hallway. Just the, just the thought of just seeing those paddles literally kept us just.
It's called deterrence.
Do anything.
Yeah, it's called deterrence.
Yeah.
I had a really bad weapons loading section once and I, and it finally got turned around after about ninety days. Cause whenever I bring somebody in to talk to me, I had the manual, manual for courts martial sitting on my desk with the binder facing them so they could read it. Okay. Let's talk about your performance in the end of the runway army crew today.
Colonel, you are killing me. Um, okay. So Diane has a comment that I think is a really good one for you. She said, I just had this conversation last night with a teacher. Their issue is when reporting, who is the bad cop and who's willing to take action? No one knows who's on the tape. So I think that is, there is a, and we've talked about the culture in public schools numerous, numerous times on this program. Um, and that's one of the reasons why I left teaching myself was just the culture is, had gotten horrible. And that was all the way back in the early two thousands.
That's the challenge today. And I think that's going to take a while to fix, but it is fixable. It's not impossible. It just takes continued effort and leadership.
So.
And it requires it across the district and with every principal. And the teachers need to know they're going to be backed up by their principal, not under.
Well, that's where I was, that was kind of where I was headed. I mean, from you have, from your job, basically you know how to meet people where they are and how to provide help. So you, we, teachers should back you because you are going to be able to help back these teachers. You know, that, that these good teachers that, that try to.
I'm very pro teacher because they.
Because they, you know.
Yeah. I'm very pro teacher because they have the hardest job and they're, they're the direct contact to the children in the, in the classroom. And we need to make their job as supportive and as easy as we can, remove the administrative overhead, remove the administrative burdens. Door, one door down from me was a very nice lady, a neighbor who worked for 10 years to get her teaching certificate and her bachelor's degree at night. She finally got it. She was all excited. She went to teach at a middle school here in Edmund and she taught for one year and quit. I'm going, what's going on? She goes, my principal demanded performance evaluations on every student in every class, every day. And I go, that's impossible.
Yeah.
She said, I had thirty two students in six classes. I said, that is impossible. Did you tell your principal that? She didn't care. She wanted it or she's going to fire me. So I, I quit just before she fired me. Now she's a librarian and much happier, but we lost a great teacher and that's absolutely useless.
Yeah.
We have principal, you don't quit your job, you quit your boss. And when your boss is like that, we need to remove the boss.
Yeah. Well, I, I think that's going to be kind of a common theme you're going to run into in these larger school districts to where literally, you know, like I, I just heard over and over again from many teachers that they're just completely micromanaged from the administration, just completely micromanaged.
Yeah, that, uh, micromanagement is not an enduring trait and it drives people crazy. Uh, and people will leave. Uh, and if we have a high turnover in the district, that's the symptom and indication too. So.
Yeah.
Well, you know, that, that was, that's the saddest thing for me, the micromanagement stuff, because one of the things that I found out just over the years, really good teachers are extremely creative people. And they will come up with all kinds of different ways because kids don't, they, there's a spectrum of learning. This kid's going to get it. If you do this, this kid's going to get it. And you, you can't, you know, so one day I would focus on this type of learning and another day I would focus on this type of learning. Or then we would do something like this together. And, and so really good teachers, not saying that I was a really good teacher, but you know what I mean? They're very creative. And when you pigeonhole them and say, well, you need to collect the data on this and you need to make sure, because so much of this stuff that they're doing, that I hear from teachers that they're doing in classrooms today, isn't even educational. It doesn't help kids at all. It's just data collection garbage.
Yeah. And, and we're doing, we're doing surveys in classrooms that are almost psychological, unlicensed psychology, for example. Uh, give them a test to say, do you feel safe? Well, I did until I got this question. And now I wonder if I should be safe or if I am safe, or if the other kids are feeling safer, if I'm feeling safe and they're not, then it just has nothing to do with the basics of reading, writing, arithmetic and American history.
Okay. So we have another question for you, which is a great question. I love this question so much. What's your stance on the Chrome book? In, in Margaret's opinion, we need to get back to textbooks. As a parent, I can't see what my child is doing, assignments or papers.
I, uh, I tend to agree. You know, one of the knocking doors, you know, for this campaign, we ran into a teacher down in Moore and the individual said, uh, the saddest thing about the COVID shutdown was that the teachers learned that school wasn't important. And then they learned that distance learning was not working well, was not teaching their kids much. The kids are kind of going through the motions of blowing it off. And I'm going, well, we've got two problems here. First problem is the kids aren't learning anything with this stuff. And the second problem is that parents are learning the wrong lesson. The teaching isn't important. That needs to kind of get turned around in a heartbeat. Uh, giving a kid a tablet is like giving an eight-year-old an iPad and, uh, and have a good time. You know, it's an electronic babysitter and probably we don't need that. Plus it costs so darn much. And when you give one to a kid, they have no cost associated to them with it. So if it gets broken, abused, lost or run over by a truck, it didn't cost me anything. So we've got a huge cost there on top of it. So I, I like textbooks. Yeah, we had textbooks torn up and abused and all that. But we knew who the textbook was signed out to. And if it was really bad shape, mom and dad got to buy a new one.
Oh, yes. I remember checking in and checking out textbooks every year. So I'm going to stop for a second and go back to some comments because we've had some really great comments that I think, um, Lisa says, effort, leadership and an enforcement of rules already there. Why is so much overlooked and swept under the rug? And she was responding to you say, we don't do that. Um.
I, I don't see evidence of it. Okay.
Yeah. If you remove the administration, you could save tons of money, which is true.
Okay, go ahead.
Lisa says that ridiculous micromanagement is the sign of a principal or administrator who wants to appear fabulous, but is instead impotent, which sounds like something you would have said, Colonel. Um, every week my son is taking those tests. She meant surveys that they were talking about. Um, so Julia says textbooks have age inappropriate content for like five-year-olds. What have you done today to keep your class safe? And I think what she meant was, is that's what you would ask the teachers. You know, because I think the teachers, you know, they're the ones in the classroom. They've got to be at first responsible for what the kids are do, doing and seeing. And then you need to be responsible for making sure that that teacher is keeping the kids safe. And then we had another comment, we need to have a Colonel Putnam in every district. Most teachers just want to teach and not be taken away from academics. And that's, and that, and that was.
Well, and I think that's really where the rubber hits the road and, and kind of the future of education. I mean, are we gonna focus on academics? Are we going to do all this other stuff?
Well, do other stuff on your own time when you're an adult and can waste the money, but you gotta get the basics down. I'm, you know, I'm seeing kids that are behind in third grade. When they get behind by the third grade and never get caught up. And those are the ones that drop out. Or do, I don't want to sound like an inner urban gang in New York City, but you know, it, it, when you don't have any options, you do stuff that's not very, uh, not very favorable to you and your outcome in life.
Yeah.
Let's, let's, let's graduate people who are functional adults. They can balance a checkbook. They know what a mortgage looks like. They know what 28% interest on your credit cards looks like. That they shouldn't get a degree in French art history with a $200,000 college loan. I mean, uh, and they, and we don't need to generate everybody into college. Uh, you know, the guys that come around and fix my air conditioning, my plumbing and take care of my roof are driving fairly new pickup trucks. They're doing okay and they don't have any college debt. I've got a, uh, I've got a step grandson who, uh, went to the New York City University of Abu Dhabi on a $350,000 four-year full ride. And he studied for six months in Berlin and six months in Singapore. Six months in New York City, all paid. And he got a degree in film. And so he's a waiter and he's not real happy about it, but every other job is beneath him. And I'm going, no job is beneath you. So he's a little snowflake who wants climate justice and all these other things. I'm going, oh, son, you have no idea how the world works. And, and everybody who indoctrinated you really did you no favors. So.
Well, and I think that goes back to Chromebooks. I think it's extremely hard for anybody to know, parents to know what's on that. There was, um.
Well, and also Jenny, real quick, I want to be mindful of your time. If you need to go Jim, because we've been on about 40.
Oh, we have been.
Forty, 45 minutes.
Oh my goodness, sorry.
I know you've got some stuff going, so I don't, I don't want.
Well, I want you to know I'm very pro teacher. I think, I think, uh, we need to involve the parents more. Parents and teachers need to be hooked up to the hip if the parents are responsible. Teachers need to be supported. They need to have vice principals that back them up. And we don't need four or five vice principals per school. We need one. And we need a principal who, who develops mentors and helps get the teachers going. And then we need to get back to the basics. So we don't have these abysmal results. And you know, you look on, on, on schooldigger.com on a website and the bottom line is, they've been still doing really well. Well, okay, we're, we're better than, than maybe Tulsa or Oklahoma City. But that's not a really good comparison and we're 49th nationwide in schools. So, you know, keeping going down to the seventy centile and no, it's not acceptable. We need to fix it.
Well, Colonel, I, I enjoyed having you on and listening to you today. And I mean, just from my perspective of having done, you know, done a lot in education over the years.
I appreciate what you did, by the way.
I'm with you. I mean, I, I, these are all the things I think Michael and I have said over the years and they're things that, that if you really look at the statistics, these are the things, the things that you've been talking about, leadership, you know, leadership in classrooms, you know, all these kinds of things, stopping the, the over administrative state inside the schools. All these things are things that actually create excellence. So I, I just am so, Margaret says, thanks for running. She says, thanks for running.
Oh, you're welcome. I'm amazing. Say again, Jenny?
Oh, I'm sorry. I talked over you. Pardon me. Where can we find more information about your campaign?
Uh, jim4kids5.com.
Jim, is it the letter four or F O R?
Four.
Kids, five, Jim for kids.
Not number five.
Number five.com.
Jim for kids, five, number five.com.
Okay. Well, I just didn't know what five was. So. Is this right?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. All right, everybody, please go to Colonel Putnam's website and check out uh, more information about him. And, um, Margaret says, thanks for running win or lose. You continue to bring these issues and EPS to the community. So, and Julia says, thanks, Jim. Blessings to you as you win.
Sure. Well, it'd be nice if we could do some good. That would be, that would be it. You know, I've been, uh, had a strong sense of duty in the air force and same in Northrop and uh, I, I see there's an opportunity here to make our community and our schools better. Somebody's got to step up for it.
Amen. Thank you for being with us and thank you for stepping up. And I really enjoyed talking to you today. I hope, I hope we get to talk again.
Likewise, Jenny. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Bye.
Yes, sir.
Bye bye.
I enjoyed talking to that man. Oh my goodness. What a great, what an interesting life the man's had too.
Well, and that, and that's what I think is so important.
Holy cow.
Future of, of education is you, you have real leaders, you know, real career people that are like Jim, you know, rewind 50, 60 years ago, Jenny, that the people that were in, on school boards and in your city councils, places like that, they were the pillars. They were the, the Jim Putnams of the community, you know, they were the, the doers, the people that had all the experience, did it right, ethically, moral. And, and now it's just completely the other way around. So I, I appreciate someone like, because he doesn't need to run for school board. It's not like it's something that, you know, that's his cherry on top, you know, he's doing it probably because of the genuine concern of the way he sees education and academics going.
Yeah. Well, I mean, honestly, just listening to him talk, he has all the right, all of the, the ideas that we've talked about and outlined on this show for, you know, as long as we've been doing the show for two years. We've got an anniversary coming up, which is interesting. Our two-year anniversary is coming up. Um, Margaret says, great point, Michael. And, and it's, I mean, yeah. So guys, please share this video. I'm going to make a couple of clips of some things. Colonel Putnam said, although you, I hope you wrote down the one I wanted you to put on the T-shirt because that was the best. Um, but I, I'm going to put some clips together and we'll put it up on the candidate channel. So on our YouTube page, you know, we have
Yeah.
our YouTube channel. We also have the, our little channel that's the candidate corner. So I'll get these done this afternoon and get them up there. And then please share them with friends and family, because I think just listening to, I think just listening to Colonel Putnam is refreshing. I mean, he, I get so tired of listening to people mealy mouth stuff. Well, you know.
It's kind of like, yeah, it's kind of like that, that wisdom. Yeah. It's like that wisdom from the guy that's been there and done it for a long time, you know, that's that, that can just literally just tell you, yeah, here's how you fix it. Boom, boom, boom. Just like.
Yeah. And so I, I mean, I just think the, the amount of leadership that that man has and, and notice, I mean, he's perfectly calm.
Yeah.
I, I mean, just.
Unlike us, unlike us, Jenny.
Well, certainly not like me.
Yeah. Well, you know, that, the comment that he made, and I wanted to probably tell him this during the, the podcast, but I didn't. You know, he said, virtual presence is actual absence. That's.
Yes, I wrote that one down.
Yeah, that, that's what, but, but in the vein of that, let, let's just look over the last couple of weeks here where Edmund has literally been virtual for almost a week, you know, give or take out of the last two weeks, literally almost a week of that's virtual. I'll tell you right now, like my kids, because I work, I work from the house half the time. So I'm watching my kids. They literally log on. They do about 20, 30, 45 minutes worth of work. If you call it work and then they're done, they're, they're literally done. There's no, there's no teacher interaction zoom class. It's not like this. It's not like they're attending their class over video and actually still having class like they would. It's the teachers load up some stuff, tell them to do their busy work, basically is how I took. Cause I went and looked at my daughter, my, my senior, I went and looked at my freshmen. I went and looked at my elementary school. And it's, it's literally a joke. The whole virtual side is literally a joke.
Well, and I wanted to, I wanted to bring this up. I, I wanted to listen to Colonel Putnam. So I was letting, I'm sorry, guys, I had to let a bunch of comments go, but I, I really appreciate, as you all know, I really appreciate you.
Yeah, we had a lot of comments.
Yeah, we, we did. I just couldn't get them all in because I wanted to hear what he had to say. Plus who doesn't love listening to him talk?
Yeah.
I'm just like, I just would like to have a recording of him taught, reading a book. And I'd be like, that's the best. So Margaret said, my child is an AP language and I haven't seen a paper or essay the entire year. That's insane. Honestly, that's insane. How do you have?
Not even writing an essay. Think about that, Jenny. AP language, not even writing an essay.
They're only focused on passing the AP test. Oh my gosh, Margaret, we found the same thing out when Coleman, my oldest son was doing, oh gosh, what, he was actually at EOC tech doing a program that they had just created for, he did that starting in 10th, 11th grade and did 11th and 12th grade in that. And he was in two AP classes and that's all he would come home and say, well, I don't even really, I mean, we're just learning to take the test. And I'm like, but what, that's crazy. So I, I'm backing up what Margaret says because I experienced the same things. Um, uh, kids should be writing essays starting in third grade. I agree with that. Man, all my kids do that. EPS students don't know how to write, which is a live skill. And that is the truth. I've seen kids that they can't put, and oh my gosh, sorry, I'm going all over the place. Let me try to calm down. Let me try to be Jim Putnam. And just be calm and say this. So you can tell how bad our schools are when you look at the crawl on any news outlet and you see they, they can't um, conjugated verb properly. They use terms inappropriately. They can't communicate. I mean, and this is news.
Yeah.
News, where you would think people with journalism, you know, would be taught how to write. And I, you don't forget, my dad was a professor at OU, a journalism professor at OU, and he would say this over and over again. He would get kids into the journalism department at OU who couldn't even put together a sentence, who didn't even know what a subject and a predicate was. How does that happen? You're, you're a 19, 20-year-old person and you can't write a sentence. I can tell you why. Cause you do everything on a Chromebook and, or you expect AI to do it for you or something else. So we quit teaching spelling. Remember we quit teaching spelling. We quit teaching cursive. We quit teaching, um, uh, uh, sentence structure because kids couldn't understand it and we didn't want to make them. So we just decided it wasn't important.
And Lisa's comment, there's 100% right on because now you have technology coming in and you can literally, you can, you can, you can just almost extinct your own brain. You know, you just gotta do a couple of things, put it in an AI. It's going to, you know, spit out a 2,500 word, whatever for you.
Well, and you know, here's the thing, people are going to say to us, when we, you know, go against the grain and say this kind of stuff, they're going to say, well, but it takes less time. And there's nothing wrong with that because people need their time. And, but here's the trick. Here's the trick. You get smarter. Your brain works harder, your synapses fire when you are the one that is trying to work out that stuff on a piece of paper.
Yeah. Yeah.
So you're getting stupider, which is an award, but I just thought it was funny. You're getting dumber every day. You allow these things to do that for you and you're not exercising your brain to do it. So if we're doing that just as adults, can you imagine how dumb we're allowing our kids to be for not, uh, making them do that?
Well, think, think about this Jenny, ju- just to back up what you just said. I, I read a study one time and I need to find it. This is from like, I don't know, 15 years ago, 14, 15 years ago. And in this study, they were literally, they, they had all these kids or people, college kids, whatever. They, they were measuring their brainwaves and all their stuff. And someone typing, okay, they were, they were taking notes. So someone typing only had.
I know that study.
I don't know, like six or 10 activated neural pathways, you know, something like that. I can't remember exactly. It was a real low number. But if they were actually writing with tactile contact and actually physically like moving their body and having to, you know, think about the words, you know, writing the words. I mean, it was like in the thousands, you know, and that's just, you know, you're creating brain density basically at that point compared to just the, the repetition of, you know, just a couple of things in typing. I mean, it was, it was so mind blowing to me when I saw that. I was like, how can we even you know, go off track from like physically taking notes, having physical books. But that, but that's how we've moved literally in the last 10 years.
But don't you think that's a really, really good? You know, we're always called conspiracy theorists, which as I will say again, I have silver hair because of the tinfoil in my hat. Um, don't you think that that just as an example, as a shining example of the conspiracy to dumb down our children through public education? Because every single thing that these schools are doing, well, I'll put them in a Chromebook all day. And this is great. We get to do distance learning. All of the things that they're doing are antithetical, are completely opposite. Don't make any common sense to actually making a child learn something. And, and so I just feel like it's, it literally is that the definition that you can see, which shows that what they're doing in classrooms right now is, is not conspiracy theory. They are literally attempting to dumb down students. And, and you have to know that that's true. I mean, one of the things Colonel Putnam said was about getting change counted back. You know, that's not a hard thing, right? It's just not a hard thing, but our kids don't have any clue how to do that. Um, it, I, I could go on.
I, I don't like the, and you can, you can put some of these comments up here, especially Dorn's also.
Cause I want to. Oh yeah. Dorn's was a good one back there. Thank you. Let me see if I can find it.
The thing I don't like Jenny is just, because I'm not anti-technology in any capacity whatsoever. Technology has its place. And you know, technology should hopefully help to make our life better and the world better in, in general. But at the same, at the same time, I hate the conformity. Uh, you take, you, you read your stuff on a Chromebook. You take your tests on a Chromebook. If you get the answer wrong, you can come back in and you know, gives you another chance. You're not actually learning anything. I hate just the act of typing, not writing, you know, not physically doing stuff.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just, I, I just don't like that, that new, it's like the new, it's like you as a teacher, it's like you said, you had multiple modals of different types of ways to try to teach these kids. These teachers are so hamstrung today. They, they don't have that. They can't deviate. And if they do, they get in trouble or they're going to get fired.
Yeah. And that's why, again, we're losing a lot of the good teachers because those teachers want to be, uh, they want to be creative. Like when I was teaching in middle school, this was when, um, survivor was big, you know, it was huge.
Yeah, I tried out for that.
Yeah. And I actually figured out a way, we divided kids up into teams, survivor teams. And they, they did, we did it for a whole semester, just to see how well it worked. We did it for a whole semester. Um, all the way from, I think January to May. And just to see how it worked. And we divided them all. They had their own island. They got to name their own island, whatever the island was. And then they would work on some projects, but there, you know, other things were just times that they had to take notes and take tests and the, the uh, island with the best score was the winner. So the best overall score from what everybody did at that island was the overall winner. And those kids loved it. And I actually wrote that up and got it published in the teaching journal. Um, because it was such a great, such a fun way to do it. And you know, the kids really enjoyed it. But I, but again, back to comments.
Well, and real, real quick, just to comment on that, how dare you Jenny, have some competition in school? How dare you have some competition?
I did get crap about that at the beginning, but, but I couched it. I couched it by putting them in together in a group. And so then people couldn't say, well, you're making my kid feel bad because his scores are out there. And I was like, nope, he's part of a team. So it's all good. So Margaret said, and this is important. She said, is Jim having an open forum with his appoint, uh, uh, his appointment? His opponent would love to see him debate Marcus. So say again about Marcus, just so that people know we, we're fair.
Yeah, we, we did, we did invite Marcus in for an interview and also a, a forum debate type of, uh, show that we wanted to have. And he declined both of those on multiple opportunity, you know, with, with, we gave him the opportunity and he declined, you know, multiple times. But I, I do think there will be some type of forum put on at one of the schools, probably sometime in, in, uh, in March. And, and usually plaque does those. And it'll probably be, you know, probably be hosted or emceed by a non-doc in one way or another. But that, that's probably the only thing, that's, that's probably the only thing that's, that's coming. Cause I, I just don't know if Marcus will do anything else.
Well, Diane said, cursive is the foreign language I use to communicate with my husband when I don't want kids to know what we're talking about. I've been called anti-technology because I believe kids should learn cursive and actually write with pens and pencils, even when I present evidence on a computer for them to see. Throughout school, my brain never could process reading and writing skills. And even today I fail miserably. But I have, have me building, construct a building without a drawing. I do pretty well. And I, I think Dorn is probably the, the classic example of every kid has a purpose. Every kid has a purpose. And when you expect every kid to go to college and wanna, you know, zip open their, the top of their head and cram a bunch of stuff down. I mean, it's not helping. Some kids wanna do that. Yeah. But not every kid does. And I, so I love the fact that he's.
Let me, let me make comment on Dorn's comment also. Just my, my, uh, my freshman now, when he was in, uh, later elementary school, early, early junior high. This kid was just like a math whiz. I mean, he literally could just, any math that they had in school, he'd just do it in his head. I mean, that's how, and, and one of his teachers who was actually ex-military, she was the best teacher that he had. She was ex-military and she's like, man, Walker is so advanced in mathematics. She goes, I just love to just give them this stuff. And, but then as he kept going through all these other classes, they would like make them write, you know, make them go through the syntax of writing out the equations and this and that, rather than just doing it. You know, and that, and he just, at, at that point, he just was like, what's, you know, why do I have to do it like this? This isn't how I do it in my own head. This isn't how I come up with the answer. And you know, it just kinda turned him off. And you know, I mean, he's still good, but it, it was just like, you know, why not take advantage of something that a kid can do? And let's, you know, let's move on to something else instead of trying to make them conform to the current system.
Well, and so I'll put it back up again. One size fits all is the opposite of God's plan, which is true. And then Lisa says, dumbing down our kids. Absolutely true Jenny, 100% true. And I always love it when you guys comment about how 100% true I am. Please keep that up. The parents of second graders may be second generation and not learning cursive. I know and not have learned the benefits of writing themselves. I know millennials who don't know how to read or write cursive. And I've just, I've gritched and complained about that for years because every study that's a legitimate study shows how good cursive is for the brain. There's not an, I mean, you can cite some, you can, I guess I've done this, you, you can cite some studies out there where they say, well, cursive isn't it. But all you have to do is look at where their citations came from, you know, look at exactly how they organize their paper. And you tell that it's all BS. I mean, it just isn't a good paper.
Let me, let me put something up here because I think people, people sometimes, you know, like, like you say, you know, you get the conspiracy, you know, spin on all this. Well, in the reality of things, a lot of these things have been well documented by some major, major professionals. And what I'm gonna put up here, you're probably pretty familiar with this Jenny.
Okay. Let me see.
Dumbing us down by John Gatto.
Yes.
That guy did in education in New York of all places. I mean, that is, is just, I mean, it's, this ought to be just automatic reading, you know, for every, every high school in the country.
Yeah. I, I, I completely agree. John Taylor Gatto was an amazing individual and, and yes, he was probably, he and, um, I don't know why I can't think of her name. Lady who was, amazing book, put that in the school libraries. Yeah.
When I read that, I, I never heard anything about it prior to my own school board run. And, and someone gave me that book and said, Michael, you have to read this book. If, if you're serious about school board and making a change in education, you have to read the, and I, and I was completely, completely blown away.
Yeah. And he was John Ta- and not even, but let's put that in context, in New York, in New York City. In New York City. So I mean, that's part of the reason. Okay. So I'm gonna, cause it's, we're at 115 and I don't wanna take up too much time today, but there are, I have got like six, I think, things that I wanna share, uh, this morning that since we're on education, I wanted to just, uh, share these. So let me pull these in.
Before you do, I wanna make one more comment.
Okay, sure.
Since, since, uh, Colonel Putnam has that ability to procure you a tank for the farm. I figured, you know, you, you said the next time they roll out those humanure vehicles, you're just gonna throw yourself in front of all of them. I bet you get one of those tanks and just, you know, head it off with the tank and the barrel, you know, just right down there at the, at one of the trucks. You know, you ought to be able to stop it pretty easily that way.
Well, I'm, me and the Colonel will talk about then that maybe that's the reason why I had to a tank is to keep them from dumping human toxic crap out here. Then yeah, then I need a tank for that. All right. So let me show you a couple of things that are, uh, this is just news. I'm just pulling in news. Oh, the first thing I wanna do though, cause we talked about, um, doing the, talking about this and then we kinda forgot to do it. So let's do it right fast. So if you want to know what a school board does, then go to Title 70 Schools, um, 70 dash five dash 117. And that will give you exactly what it is that schools do and you will, or school boards do. And you will find out that, you know, what the Colonel and Michael and I were talking about is exactly correct. The answer to the question of what does a school board do? Everything is correct. So, um, if you want to back us up, I mean, if you don't believe me and you want to go, you know, try to argue with me, I mean, good luck.
Yeah. The school board is literally, yeah, the school board is the final say, literally on everything.
So I'm just scrolling through, this is law, this is, and it says Jesse, a US law, but that's just the website. This is Oklahoma School Board Law. And you'll see that it is a very long title or a very long, um, section, whatever. I can't.
What is that? That's Title 70s? What section is that?
Uh, it's Title 70, oops, hold on, let me back up. Section 70 dash five dash 117. So make sure that if you want to, there will be Diane, get out your pencil and your paper, begin numbering from one. Yes, that's hysterical. But, um, so that's there. And I want you to check us out and make sure that you understand that's why school board positions are so unbelievably important. And why Michael and I and Margaret and everybody else has been so vocal, I think that's good, vocal about making sure that we get good school board candidates. Okay. So let's flip through some, um, law, uh, or some stuff that's been going on in our, in our legislature. So I'm gonna share this tab. This is from the Oklahoma Senate.gov. This is press releases. Senator Pew advances key education priority measures. So I'm gonna go down Senate Bill 707, modify school accreditation procedures by directing the state board of education to adopt standards for accrediting school districts instead of individual school sites. It establishes a four-year accreditation cycle and removes provisions allowing interruptions to the cycle. I'll have to read that. Um, I, I don't usually approve of many of the things that Senator Pew.
Is he head of the education still?
He is Senate Education Chair, correct. Uh, Senate Bill 699 enhances due process for school districts facing accreditation status changes. So there have been with, uh, and say what you will about Ryan Walters, and I will say this, I have asked him to come on the program. And he has not, and I've put in formal requests and he does not want to appear here. So whatever I say about him remains unchallenged because he refuses to come on this program. So, um, whatever you wanna say about him, one of the things that I have approved of is the fact that he has used accreditation. And I hate to say as a weapon, but I'm not sure how actually not to say that because here's my point. If you want to show, i- if you want to do things that are completely against parental rights and responsibilities, if you want to allow dirty books in schools and you, all these things. And, and if you're not educating kids appropriately, well, let's say that you're on, cause we do have some schools who literally have 15% proficiency in English and/or math. Why should you be accredited?
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, my dog could come up with that proficiency percentage.
Well, hey, think, think about this Jenny, when you're in school, I mean, they have a grading scale, correct? I mean, if you're below, what is it? 76, 60%, 70%, whatever, you're failing. I mean, why does that not, why does that exact same scale not apply to the actual performance of these school districts?
But don't you think that's a good question though, Michael? That's a good question. So here I believe, and I'll have to read the bill, I'm going to preface it by saying that. It looks to me like this is a pushback from Senator Pew on Ryan Walters' decision to try to make schools more accountable to their acc- uh, their accreditation procedures. Then 797 establishes clear guidelines for the suspension or revocation of a teacher's license or certificate. That is a direct pushback to what, remember Stitt fired three of the school boards in, in, including our members, including Kendra Wesson, who were outspoken about removing the accredit, removing the, uh, licensing or certification of teachers who were predators of children. So this seems to me like, and I may be wrong, and you know, Senator Pew, you're always welcome on this program if you would like to push back. I mean, it'll, it'll be, you know, it will definitely be, there will be no puffball questions here, but you're definitely welcome to come take me on for sure. I, this seems to me to be kind of a very slap in the face to the board's hearing from parents and, and students and former students who have talked about being abused by coaches and teachers in the system. Why would you want to allow that to happen? So I, I, I haven't.
We've gone in depth, I mean, in depth on that entire process with visit, you know, Representative Conley. I mean, we've gone massively in depth in that.
Correct. And so I, I think Senate Bill 797 is something that all of you who are watching this morning, we have another great audience. Thank you for tuning in. Look up Senate Bill 797 and I think that's one that needs to be stopped in the House immediately. We should be raising a ruckus about that. And again, we need to read it and make sure that we understand what we're talking about. But that seems like one that we definitely need to check out. Okay. So here is another one that I wanna share. This, this is a commentary. Taxpayers were sold a load of bull about a school program that benefits the wealthiest Oklahomans. And I will come over here and share this tab so that you can see to what she's referring. This is, the report shows 19.3 million in Oklahomans private school tax credits went to wealthier households. Michael, what did we say was gonna happen with this thing? That it was gonna go to the wealthy people? That's what we said was gonna happen.
Pretty much.
Because it never, ever, ever, anything that these people, these legislators come up with that are supposed to help the, I, I don't even know.
They sell it by helping the poor, but that's not who the benefits are because in the, and we talked about it before. The, the people that probably need that the most, they can't afford the excess of what it costs to go to private school. You know, they can't afford all that other stuff. They can, they're getting partial tuition. They can't afford the rest of it. So they don't get to go.
So I'm gonna read this so everybody can hear what I say. I'm going to try to have excellent diction. A mandated report released by the Oklahoma Tax Commission with little fanfare shows that about 21% of the tax credits issued as part of the parental choice tax credit program for spring 2025 went to families making more than $250,000.
A pretty big number.
So we don't make that in my household. I mean, we don't, we don't get over, I mean, we're, we're definitely not even in the 200 range in this household. And I put four kids through, um, homeschooling on that. And so I'm supposed to be super excited that people have twice the amount of money in a year than I live on, get my tax dollars to put their kids in private school. So I'm, I'm supposed to be okay with that. Just curious. I'm not, I mean, just so that you know, in case you can tell by my snarky attitude about it. So that, and they want to, and part of the reason why I wanted to make sure I got this one on today is because you know, there is a bill to increase the cap, that our governor wants to increase the cap on the money that's available. So, you know.
Well, it wasn't that part of the original? Wasn't it gonna be a three-step, you know, a three-year process of increasing, you know, from like a hundred million to 150 to 250 or whatever?
No, it was. And you're right. But I mean, if we've got a quarter of the people on this program over $250, I'm pretty incensed about that. I don't think we need more money for that. Not that we need the program in the first place. I've said it over and over again. Don't wanna go into it now, but yeah, that's not what we need. Okay.
And what'll, what'll happen, you know, what, what else is gonna happen in that Jenny is all these private schools, they'll just raise, they'll just raise the rate. People that can afford it, it doesn't matter. They're, they're getting a, a credit, plus they're gonna pay extra. And then you're really gonna keep those, the, the kids that it's intended for, you're really gonna keep them out of that position.
Yeah. Uh, oh, absolutely. And we said that when they started this, remember? And then lo and behold, the news came out that that was actually happening. You're like, I'm so tired of people. I mean, you can complain about me all you want. I really don't care. I'm too old to worry about it. I just don't care. Like me or not, it's fine with me. But the thing that bugs me so bad is when they say, they talk to our friends. Well, you don't wanna talk to Jenny about that, blah, blah, blah. Cause they know I'm right. They know you're right. They know we're right. They know we've been right since Common Core. I, I mean, you can, it doesn't take some elevated prognosticator to come up with these ideas. It's common sense. I mean, you, all you have to know is a little bit about the way humans function to go, and this is eh, this is bad. This isn't gonna work out like you want. It's not that big, but people don't listen to us. And then.
Well, and, and just think about the track, go, go back to Common Core Jenny and think about the amount of billions of dollars that have been put into the Oklahoma education system since then. Are we better? Are we better from 10 years ago or are we worse? You know, look at, look at the billion, look at the increase in money that's put in the system. Are we better? Are we worse? We getting better results? Are these kids, you know, proficient? Are we 80, 90% proficient? Or, you know, it's getting worse. It's literally getting worse.
Absolutely. Okay. So for those of you who, um, are, uh, fans of ours, because we don't want Saint Isidore Catholic School paid for by your tax dollars. You will be happy to know that Supreme Court has set a date to hear that case. And I think it's in, on April 30th. So put that down on your calendar. God knows I put it down on my calendar because I'm paying good attention to this. If they choose to fund, use government funds to fund a public school.
And you know what, you know what kinda really bothers me about that case? You know, let's say Supreme Court does decide, yes, that they can do that. I mean, does that basically just nullify the Oklahoma constitution? I mean, if, if the Oklahoma, if it's already gone through the Oklahoma court system and the, and it's basically unconstitutional in Oklahoma. But now they're gonna use a federal law to override that. I mean, is that just gonna nullify the Oklahoma constitution? I mean, anything that's, that the feds say yes to and Oklahoma says no. I mean, anything that's, that the feds say yes to and Oklahoma says no to. I mean, is that just, you're just going to say, hey, you, you ruled right here in this case.
Well, I think that's a good point. I think if they decide to do this, we can just all say, well, we're not following the constitution anymore. We'll do whatever we want. Um, not, well, I mean.
Well, it's just, it's just.
Protects us. It, you know, it holds the government at bay. But then, then how many things have happened that have been unconstitutional? Nobody does anything about it to protect the citizens. You know, they just go, oh, yawn. Well, sorry, it's against the constitution.
Well, I just, I like the concept, the original concept of state sovereignty, you know, more so than just you have to do what the feds say. I mean, I just, I, I hate going down that road of consolidation to where you have one power, one person, you know, one, one legislative body, they make all the rules for everybody and too bad. I mean, I just, I hate that.
Yeah, it's, but it's wrong. I mean, it's wrong. That's not federalism. That's not Republicanism. Okay. So here's another, oops, I hit the wrong button. Hang on, now I've got to pull it back in because I did it.
Green chair.
Yeah, I did the wrong thing. Sorry about that. Uh, here it is. This is the one I wanted to share and is it up? No, because I've got to go throw it in here. Okay, here it is. Bill would allow Oklahoma schools to offer free pre-K to three-year-olds. So who, who all out there wants to, let's, let's look at the comments and let's, um, so type in everybody, what is the first wrong thing with this? And then, and we're not even going to go to the article, just in, in the headline, what are the problems? Come on, everybody, let's get going. Write it in there. Steph's going back to the Supreme Court thing, mad as hell. So done with government. Uh, me too. Okay, so they're not typing fast enough, so I will go ahead then and fill the, okay, so the first thing is, and I can't believe Julia didn't just like pound it in there really fast. What's, oh, well, that's, okay, that's the overarching, there you go, Jules, that's the overarching. Oh, there it is. There it is. And Gracie, who, 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 who wins the title today? What's free?
Nothing.
Okay, Lisa got it too. Nothing is free. So this is it. This is why I love our people. Our people are so awesome. There's nothing free. It's all, and Steph, there's nothing free. It's our tax dollars. What do you mean? Free pre-K? What a pile of crap. But then now we have to go back to Julia's, which is, it destroys families. Why should three-year-olds be in school?
Yeah, exactly.
Hold on. She says backup priority posts and I got it back up there. So why should three-year-olds be in school?
Well, so parents can work.
So, okay, so parents can work. Taxpayers are, we already pay for childcare for people to go to work who are in a certain economic strata. We already, taxpayers already pay for that. Why should taxpayers pay for parents to decide they want to abandon their three-year-olds to go to a public school? And then why should we end up having to give more money to public schools, which we'll have to do, to pay for the three-year-old pre-K program? Oh, and this is a good one from Lisa. Pre-K, so basically government-funded toilet training. How's that not the case?
No.
It, that's the case. So going back again, so nothing is free and this destroys families. And it destroys children. By the way, children this young should be at home with a parent. I mean, at least one parent, obviously in the world of gosh, if we could have everything we wanted, both parents would be able to stay home with their kids and train them up in the way they should go. Um, but if you, I mean, if people have to work, you know, fine, but one parent should be at home with young children. And if you want to argue with, with me, I'll give you a two-word phrase that you may be familiar with, and it's called family planning. And so what you do is you delay that kind of gratification of having a family until you can afford to do what's best for the children. Not just because you feel like you're 24 or whatever, and you need to pop out a kid. No, you, you wait until you can afford to stay home and raise that child. That's just the best for the child. But you know, anymore, we're so worried about what, what we do because it's all about the adults and all about what we want. And, but I'm a woman and I have to go work and you know, all that kind of stuff.
Even take the, take the work side out, you know, I need to go to lunch with my friends. I need to do this. I need to be able to go to this store, go that or travel here, do that. I mean, there's a lot of that in that also Jenny. Mom, you know, there's moms today, you know, have a, there's, there's some moms that I've seen personally that they don't want to take the responsibility of being a mom. They just want to have a kid because it's, you know, it's a, it's an add-on. It's just their, their little add-on.
Well, yeah, and they get to say, well, I have two kids and a dog. I'm like so normal. I have my two kids and a dog.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I mean, this is just, if we take three-year-olds out of the system, we increase the pressure on the early childhood education centers. Oh my God, I can't, I cannot, I can't deal with it. Okay, so we've got two more things. I've lost my cursor. Hold on. Okay, there we go. Um, here is a really, here's another really important one. This is from Breitbart. Maine's schools collapse as more migrants pour in. So, hey, Michael, do you remember this? Well, there was a lot of political drama about Ryan Walters deciding that we should just count the number of illegal immigrants that we had in schools because maybe it was hurting classrooms and making it hard for teachers to teach, but that's political drama, according to our governor.
Hey, we should have changed, when, when you went to do the news, we should have changed it to our political animal shirts.
Oh, we should have. Dang it. Next time we'll have to do that. So while the governor is kowtowing to a certain Republican Hispanic in the population of all of Oklahoma, uh, who raises Cain anytime you do anything, and we'll have a whole exposit on this person. So don't worry about that. All of that is in the works. Um, so you, you have, we can't do anything that would hurt illegal immigrants. And here's the problem with that is if you really didn't need to know, illegal people who are here are not paying taxes, who are not, which are not going to the schools, which are not helping the schools be able to withstand the flood of immigrants that are coming. You have people in this state, principals even, who are, who are actually bold and will speak out and say, uh, we can't even educate kids in my classrooms because these kids don't know how to speak or read or write even in their own language. And they're in this classroom and my teacher can't teach to them, but they're bound to take the state test. But then they're creating problems for other people, other kids in the, the classroom so that they can't learn. Who the heck doesn't get all of that stuff?
Yeah. Well, and why wouldn't you? Yeah. And why wouldn't you want to, you know, if they're here, they're going to be in the system. Why wouldn't you actually want to get them into a place to where they could at least fast track within a three, four month period? You can teach those kids how to read, how to, how to speak English in one way or another. You know, it's not like we're looking at, it's going to be a 10-year-long project to get this kid. These kids are smart. They're, they're adaptable. Obviously they've made it here. You know, they, they're survivors. You, you isolate all those kids, you get them into a specifics, a facility that's geared directly to teaching them and get them out of the, the regular classroom. So the teachers don't have that burden. They can actually teach.
Yeah, but our governor thinks that that's, that what you just said is political drama.
Yeah.
So, you know, and so he had to can three board members who voted to try to help teachers and schools and by extension taxpayers for paying stuff that isn't effective or helping. So you have Maine schools collapse as more migrants pour in. You have this as a headline in Breitbart News, and yet you have a Republican governor, Governor Stitt, who doesn't want political drama discussing this issue and needs to can school boards to prevent that from happening. So I hope, I will cut, I think that's super, super important. Okay. And our last one for today is going to be this one. Bixby Superintendent Rob Miller announces bid to replace Ryan Walters with Rapp. And I watched the rap and I'm sorry, Rob, I, it was a little skingy for me, but, um, he is challenging. I guess, who knows who's running for what at this point in time, but he is running for state superintendent. And here's the thing, and Julie will remember this well. Um, Rob Miller was actually with us against Common Core. I mean, we, he's actually on our YouTube channel. If you go way back to the 2010s, he's actually on our YouTube channel, um, giving testimony to the state legislature about how bad Common Core was for kids. And it was a really sad thing. I, I'm not sure exactly what happened. And this is my perspective. I'm actually going to ask Rob to come on the podcast and talk about why he wants to run for superintendent, because I think it would be really interesting to hear his commentary. And the current superintendent we have has not desired to come on after we've, I've issued several invitations. So maybe it would be interesting to have Rob on, but I, the sad thing is that, you know, in my perception, Rob went from, you know, being a big stalwart against Common Core to kind of being, well, and that's true, Julie says, we had a lot of educators on board with this against Common Core, and that's true. Um, but then, you know, I haven't been real nuts about, I mean, he's been pretty outspoken. Although I saw something, and I think it was in this article, that really upset me. Hold on a second, let me pull this back up and see. Oh, okay. Well, while not endorsing Miller, Erica Buzzword, Buzzard Wright, the founder of Oklahoma Rural School Coalition, which is pretty much not on board with most of everything that we agree with, was absolutely thrilled that Rob Miller is stepping up to the plate. Um, Kim, Grace Kim, a spokesman for Walters. Hold on a second. There was a comment, maybe it was not in this. Oh, here it is. He's a liar, Walter said when asked about Miller. I mean, he's a really true embarrassment. He knows every year when he gets Title One funds and we're dealing with all kinds of financial problems with his district that we're hoping to address right now. So you know, Rob, Rob's a clown and a liar. So he knows that. Okay. So I'm not sure how that's helpful to any situation. So even if Rob and I are not on the same, we don't agree with some things, I, I'm not sure how calling him a clown or a liar would be helpful.
Well, let me, so, so Rob is going to run for superintendent?
Yeah, that's.
Let me just ask you this Jenny, this is, this is like, in my everyday job, this is what we do. We, we literally look at deals, analyze things and, you know, decide if it's something that we should invest in or not. So just putting the, the, just the very basics of, of investment principle like into this deal. So if I look at Rob, I, I don't know the guy, never heard of him. I don't really know anything about Bixby, but if he's superintendent at Bixby, correct? Does he have like one of the best performing schools in the entire state? Are all his proficiencies in his school district, are they all like above 80, 85, 90%? You know, what, what is his past performance that's going to show? Cause you can say all you want, like in an investment deal, you can say, oh yeah, we're going to give you this kind of return this. And that's, and that's how all these investments are. What you have to look at in every single investment is what is the track heck, the, the track record history? For 20 years, you know, has this been a proven result? And it's getting better and better and better. You know, what's his teacher retention like?
Yeah.
What, you know, what, what's the overall, you know, pulse of the Bixby district? You know what? If he can't do it there in his own place, that's his baby. If he can't do it there, how's anything gonna, how's anything going to translate forward to, and on a larger scale?
Well, and I think last time I looked at, yeah, I think last time I looked it up, he actually, Bixby actually does really pretty well. I'll have to look it up again just to make sure, but also too.
Maybe he, maybe he does have good results. I don't know. I'm just saying.
Yeah.
Where I'm looking, that's what I would be concerned with.
For sure.
You know, with that, with that type of deal.
Well, for sure. And I think it's definitely something we have to look into, but also too, I tend to think. And, um, I mean, this has been backed up with, with research, just in terms of the fact that kids in general, this is just a generalization, kids in general, when they come from a wealthier background, like two parents have degrees, for example, or at least one parent has a degree, they tend to do better in school because education is a, you know, is something that's important to, to the parents and they, and they speak, you know, in a different way and, and that kind of thing. So Bixby is a pretty affluent area. And so that's something that, you know, can be factored in. Um, but again, I, you know, I think probably reaching out to Rob and asking him to come on the podcast would be, you know, helpful because it's certainly, even on the things that we don't agree, I think it's important to have those conversations with people because that's the only way you learn. You simply don't learn by yelling at people or calling people names. I don't feel like that's in any way helpful. There has to be, there has to be some kind of discussion going on there. So, um, oh, I, yeah, so Julia is saying, and I think I remember this too. Um, I believe Bixby, Bixby School Problems had a lot to do with Janice Danforth, Starting Moms for Liberty. And I think you're right, because they had the, the, uh, book, school book issue going on. And I, I definitely think that's, you're, I think you're right about that. So that's some headlines from today. And I will say that I've been very disappointed with the legislature as things have been going so far this year. We're about at the end of the period of time in which bills can be heard. Um, the committee, the final committee, I think is Thursday, and then what isn't heard then doesn't get a hearing for the year. And so, you know, we had something like 3,700 bills introduced in the legislature this year, which is ridiculous. You can't hear 3,700 bills, um, which is why I've always said that I, or in recent years, I should probably say, I've agreed with the notion that every legislator gets at least two bills, you know, that need to have a hearing. Because we, we've had, and I wrote an article about it just recently. Oh, final committee was last Monday? I thought it was this Thursday. Okay, well, so, uh, problems there. So what ended up happening with Jim Shaw, our representative that was elected here in Lincoln County, none of his bills were heard, not a single one of them got a hearing. And I wrote an article about that. I suggest you go to rap2.org and look it up. But my argument is, and I, I'd love to hear the counter argument, if there is one. But my argument is that's the effect of creating taxation without representation for the entire Lincoln County. Because Jim was sent up there to do certain things having to do with humanure and wind turbines. That was, those were the things that he campaigned on because that's what people were concerned about in his district. And if you basically say up yours, you beat out the, you know, Kevin Wallace, our friend, and we're just going to prevent you from having your bills heard or whatever the reason is, that he didn't have his bills heard. I make the argument in the article that it's a, you know, kind of an up yours thing. But if, if you're going to do that and prevent these bills from being heard, I don't know why we're not doing something similar. Right? Lincoln County residents need to be creating their Boston Tea Party. Because that's, that's ludicrous that you just say, eh, we don't like a representative, or we're just not going to allow a representative to have at least one of their bills heard. That's beyond the pale. It's beyond the pale. beyond the pale. It's beyond the pale. Really bad. So um, I guess we're done for here. And the rep who authored the bills on board with, oh, oh, okay. So that goes back to up here, I think Lisa said, uh, pre-K. Okay. So I think we went back to that one. Oh, that's funny. Another bill was written that they had to be toilet trained snark. Um, I'm not sure. I think that went back to, to what we were talking about earlier about with the pre-K. All right. Well, anything else, Michael? We've had a, a long podcast today, which hopefully was, you know, I loved the comments that we had and loved having Colonel Putnam on that. What a man. Love that guy.
Well, his, this, the, the life and career experience that he brings in, I mean, and I, I said, it's like, it's like that, that guy you'd go to that's like, you know, got all the wisdom, you know, of all the old times and you know, just how to do everything. I mean, that's just, he's like, he's just like encapsulating all of that.
Yeah. Yeah. Plus in his voice.
Yeah.
Just love that. And his story, that was so much fun. Well, um, we really appreciate him being on this morning. That was, uh, that was great. Um, and we, you know, we'll still say, you know, if Marcus wants to come on and, and talk about, you know, whatever, we're still happy to have him on. So, um, you know.
We're not, we're not total, we're not total meanies.
No. No, I mean, we've had people on this show that have been, have been, and, and I can think of, um, oh gosh. The guy, we, we debated school choice.
Oh, yeah. Um, yeah, I wasn't on that. That was you and Julia. I, I couldn't be on that day because remember he gave the, he gave the, the kind of the little comparison to Tesla or electric cars and the whole deal. And I wanted to just tear that to shreds. Remember I was like feverishly texting you. I was like.
Yeah. Oh, that's right. You were. That's right. You were. And we have him. And we had him on. He's the one pushing this, the St. Isidore of school. And we, we didn't treat him poorly or meanly or call him names or anything. Um, we had, we had a really nice conversation. We did not agree. But we had a really nice conversation. So there's no reason that people should be scared about coming on here unless you, unless you can't back up your ideas. And if you can't back up your ideas and you're not bold enough to try, then I can understand how you wouldn't want to come on here because we're not fluff. We're not going to ask you.
Well.
Tough questions.
Kind of in that same vein Jenny, I mean, you've extended, you know, invitations to a lot of different lawmakers and, you know, influential people. And the only ones that seem to actually come on are the, are, you know, some type of person that's more for the people in general. You know, not so much government, more, more, you know, actual people representation. I mean, there's probably no coincidence in that. That's not just, you know, just happenstance. It's.
Well, because I think it's hard to justify things when you have to say, well, because my lobbyist told me so. Just saying. All right. Julia says, great show as usual. Well, great comments as usual. Julie, thank you for all your questions to Colonel Putnam. Those were great questions, which he answered with aplomb, I might say.
Yeah.
All right. Um, thank you so much for being with us today. On Friday, we have, uh, Don Spencer, uh, president of OK2A, and he's going to come on and we're going to talk a little bit about what uh, gun bills there are that are still out there. And he'll have a list of those and we'll talk a little bit about those. And we haven't talked about that in two years. So it just seemed like time to get Don on and, you know, get some, um, get some updates there. So we'll have him on. And then, um, we've got everybody scheduled for March. I think it's going to be, there are going to be some really interesting discussions to have there. So I, I will be putting up our schedule um, by Friday, um, up on our social media. I usually pin it to the top. So if you want to just, you know, set your calendar for, make sure, I want to hear this one. Um, you can do that. And so I'll have those out on Friday and pinned to the top. So everybody will have them. Um, and if you ever have any suggestions for somebody that you'd like to come on, um, please don't ever hesitate to reach out to either Michael or I. We're happy to take suggestions for sure. So, you know, please do that. All right. Anything, Michael?
That's it.
Other than it's beautiful today.
Now.
Go out and I'm going to go out and sit on the porch again like lizard, just soak up a little bit of that sun, get some vitamin D. I encourage everybody who can do that to do that too. And we'll see you again right here, Friday morning at 9:00 AM. So be here and stay tuned. Talk to you soon.